Good evening and welcome to the Burlington City Council Primary Candidate Forum, conducted by the Chamber of Commerce Government Relations Committee. My name is Brian Bros and I will be your moderator for this session. Our timekeeper is Chad Byrd with Greater Burlington Partnership. In the interest of time and fairness to the other candidates, I'm going to ask each candidate to observe the timekeeper signal and stop your response when time is up. The forum will consist of questions and each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond. The candidates have not seen the questions in advance. We'll rotate through the candidates answering each question first, starting with the candidate on the left and moving to the right with each question. I would like to ask the candidates to refrain from addressing another candidate's comments and so we won't have any rebuttals during this presentation. The candidates in alphabetical order are Antonio Bailey, Robert Kreitzer, Jeremy Kemp, Christopher Repke, and Terry Schnack. Did I pronounce those right?
In alphabetical order, it's Kreitzer.
Kreitzer, thank you. Spelled the same on the ballot, though.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. All right. So let's get started by having each of you introduce yourself and share why you're running for a seat on the city council. We'll start with Mr. Bailey.
I am Antonio Bailey and I currently serve on the city council. I am running for a second term because I feel two years isn't enough to do what needs to be done. I want to give it four years to show that I can really make a difference in this community and to keep making strides to make our community better.
Mr. Kreitzer.
All right. My name is Robert Kreitzer. I previously served on the city council the cycle before last. I would like to pick up where I left off. There were some projects that we were working on that I would like to see to fruition. I feel like I'm a great communicator for the community and that I listen to your concerns and comments and that I act on those appropriately. I just want to keep doing what we're doing and preserve our amenities and continue to make progress. I think that we've put a lot of headway into things and that we've been fiscally responsible with our budgets and would like to continue that trend and be part of it. So that's why I'm running for council.
Mr. Kemp.
My name is Jeremy Kemp. I suppose I'm the first newcomer on the board, but my name, I am 33. I've lived in Burlington my whole life. I have owned a business here for over 10 years and I, um, I just want to help make this community, community better and do that by, um, basically creating more opportunities for more people. There are certainly programs that need additional support such as the library, which we learned much more about the situation, financial situation that they're in based on, uh, cuts from the state level and federal level and other, um, programs that disproportionately would impact less privileged people if those programs and services would go away. So yeah, more opportunities for more people.
Thank you. Mr. Repke.
Christopher Repke, you go by Chris. I've lived here in Burlington since 1994. It's my home. We're no matter what now. So, um, I'd like to see a better focus on the neighborhoods. We're making progress downtown and that, but if you want to keep downtown going, you need stronger neighborhoods and need them to have growth and opportunities. And so after four years, I'd like to see improvements to the neighborhoods, them getting better, them getting stronger. The stronger neighborhoods will feed everything, which you need money for. Part of the problem is, you know, they've said, you know, the tax base has gone down. If you start improving the neighborhoods, their infrastructure, all those type of things, it will help. I mean, it's been said, 8% of Burlington housing is vacant. That's a bad number. Out of, say we have 5,000 housing units, 400 of them are vacant. We need to do something with that so we get a focus on the neighborhoods, which will feed everything else and bring the whole city up in a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schnack.
Hi, my name's Terry Schnack and first I want to thank the Burlington Chamber for hosting this event and being able to talk to you people. I moved to Burlington in 2007 from the Muscatine area and in 2009, I opened up a business in West Burlington called Christian Automotive Repair Services. Through our, my business, we did, we had a program, it was called a church bulletin discount, where we gifted back 10% of the repair bills to help meet needs in that community. So you can tell that that really lays on my heart and my thoughts and I want to continue to give back to my community. I retired at the end of 2022. I have been involved in the local city government quite a bit. I have been going to all of the city council meetings, work sessions, budget meetings for five years, missing four meetings in five years. I'm on the Parks Advisory Board. I'm also on the City Planning Commission. I'm not done working for people. I want this community to be the best place that it can be. I ask for your vote and allow me to do that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And now we're going to move on to the questions for the evening. I'll be happy to reread the questions for each of you if you'd like to say so. And we'll start with the first question with Mr. Bailey. Beyond supporting existing major employers, what specific strategies would you champion to attract new industries such as technology or professional services while also strengthening Burlington's locally owned small businesses?
First and foremost, I would like to promote local businesses first before bringing in someone, bringing in a new business. Once you support local business, then news spreads. We continue to build that infrastructure, keep adding businesses. The more businesses you add, the more jobs they bring. The more jobs they bring, the more people you bring. Makes your housing come up, make everything come up. Housing, then that housing market drops below the 8% value. What I would like to continue to do is to working with our citizens on ideas, on anything that will improve our city to make sure that they know that they're important and their, their efforts and their ideas matter and literally take them in consideration, not just an afterthought.
Thank you. Mr. Kreitzer.
Okay. Well, beyond supporting our current employers, which is important, to attract new businesses, we have to offer amenities and, uh, and highlight some of the things our community has to offer. We have fantastic parks. We have the riverfront. We did revitalize the downtown, which is the fastest growing demographic in Burlington. More people are moving downtown. There's more businesses downtown. We need to continue to work on our infrastructure. We continue to make improvement on our streets and roadways. We've continued to make improvement on our sewer system, which was kind of forced on us, but that's neither here nor there. And as we do that, we are going to give people a place to live, a place to work and stuff to do. As far as the housing stock, that's also important that we continue to improve our housing stock. We've added a bunch of apartments in the last 10 years, 15 years. There's a housing development that's off of West Avenue that went up in the last 10 years. And as we continue to add housing, as we continue to improve the infrastructure, I think that we'll attract businesses by kind of putting some lipstick on the pig, so to speak. So that would be my plan is to attract more employers.
Thank you. Mr. Kemp.
Um, to, I'm sorry, can you read the question?
Sure. Beyond supporting existing major employers, what specific strategies would you champion to attract new industries such as technology or professional services while also strengthening Burlington's locally owned small businesses?
So in business, a lot of times they use the adage that you should always promote from within. So to that end, I would suggest that we should, uh, enhance the ability for our current citizens to, uh, create businesses of their own, perhaps through some sort of grant program for startups. And as Robert mentioned, enhancing and promoting our community as a whole will do a lot to bring new people in as well. But I think our focus should be to, um, make it more possible for more people to start their businesses because that's truly like the foundation of our country is, and societies as a whole, is small people, is everyday people creating new businesses. And also I'd like to expand our focus from downtown to the other neighborhoods around Burlington.
Thank you. Mr. Repke.
First thing for, one of the first things you got to remember is do no harm. You don't want to do things that will harm your local business that are already here. So you got to be careful of that. You don't want to necessarily give to a business coming in some incentives that might hurt a local business. That's number one, because then you're just robbing Peter to pay Paul, as they say. Second thing, you don't promote Burlington for what it has, but I think part of that is you got to make sure you have the workforce and the places where people can move into. And that's kind of the neighborhood thing. Not everybody is going to be able to afford a $500,000 house, which is some of the ones that are going in now, it seems to be. And they say the minimum price of a house now to build new is at least 200,000. So that's kind of revitalizing the neighborhood, the old neighborhoods, getting those houses so they're available or the neighborhoods looking where people say, yeah, I'll invest in this neighborhood. I'll invest in this house. Because if you don't have people confident in that, to do that in neighborhoods, you're not going to get the confidence of businesses wanting to come to Burlington. They have to have confidence in that, A, people live, it's a safe community, it does have some amenities, and it has the housing needed to provide the workforce. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schnack.
Could you read the question?
Sure. Beyond supporting existing major employers, what specific strategies would you champion to attract new industries such as technology or professional services while also strengthening Burlington's locally owned small businesses?
I think Burlington's got a lot going for it already. You know, just with, with any business or a home or anything like that, the realtors always say it's location, location, location. We're on a, we're on a river. We're a river city. We've got a regional airport for transportation. We've got a highway system for distribution of products and things. So we've got that going for us already. The one thing that I think that will make a big difference, not just in this situation, but overall is we need to instill pride in our community. Hate to see somebody be asked, where are you from? And go, oh, I'm from Burlington. You know, you want to, you want to build some pride there and that's what builds up communities. That's what makes people want to come here. And when people want to come here, industry and businesses also look at that. Hey, this is a growing place. Look what happened in West, West Des Moines, for example, or Iowa City. You know, those things were growing and going on and, you know, the, the community spirit was real high and we need to, we need to stir that up in Burlington here. But I think we've got a lot going for it. And as far as the small business, hey, I was an entrepreneur for over 27 years. So that's where my heart's at too. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And we'll go on to the next question. Start with Mr. Kreitzer this time. With property taxes as a primary funding source, what is your philosophy on balancing city revenues?
All right. So we have revenue and then we have expenditures and we have projects that we're working on. So to budget properly with the property taxes that are available, you have a five-year, 10-year, 20-year plan. You look at the projects that you want to do and you budget accordingly. That's really what it boils down to. And you don't want to get in over your head. So we also have debt, so we have to service our debts. And as we do that, we kind of create room for the, the projects coming down the line. So really this is what our department heads and our city manager do. They, they look at the numbers and, and look at our goals and what we want to do as a council and, uh, and our mission and our vision, and then we make plans accordingly. So obviously we'd like to see property taxes come down in the long term, but to make that happen, we have to make sure everything's paid for first. So I don't ever want to see an increase in taxes. I'm working class and, you know, pretty modest, but, um, you know, I also feel like that we have to invest in ourselves and invest in our community. So if you're not paying your property taxes, shame on you. And if you, if you're doing what you're supposed to do, everything should come together and it should make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play.
Thank you. Mr. Kemp.
Could you read the question?
Sure. With property taxes as a primary funding source, what is your philosophy on balancing city revenues?
Um, so with, with property taxes and the budget as a whole, I know that the state has done, made several moves in recent years to hamper our ability to provide essential services and fund specific things like the library and, um, the, um, truly I think that, um, this, questions like this are the reason that we have a robust staff and experts on our payroll who are able to, um, address these issues as they need to be addressed for the betterment of our community and to use the funds in a respectful way or responsible way. It's our job as city council to be the mechanism of transparency to our residents, um, so that they can see what, what is coming in, what is going out, and what things are being spent on. And that's really our role. And yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Repke.
With the property taxes, it's always going to be a hard thing. They go up, they go down. You got the rollback. You got this, you got that. It's always going to be difficult. And I think one of the things to say, it always needs to be difficult with cities. You have too much money, you might not be spending it correctly. And what I mean by that is we all have to live within our means. I have to live within my means. There's a lot of stuff I would like, but that's above my means. So you always got to live and that's for the city too. And so what you got to do is priority. What is number one? What is number two? Number three? Is that going to leave things out? Yes. Is it going to make everybody happy? No, because everybody has different priorities. But first and foremost is priority. What is the best? What is needed? What is going to help the city in the long run? Property taxes is the way to do it, that yes, the state has limited it, but that's, that's the dice have been thrown. All our income is limited. And I don't know if you, but I got a $600 tax increase for this next year between the school district and the city and a little bit from the county, but the two big ones where the city, the school district was number one and that. So we got to look at that. That does have an impact. Nobody really minds paying taxes, but they want to see them used and everybody, I have to live within my means. The city needs to live within its means, prioritize this as you do in your own household. What's important first and then second. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Schnack.
I think one of the most important things is to bring fiscal responsibility to, to city government. As Chris kind of alluded to, we need to separate the wants from the needs and the needs need to be addressed first before the wants. Also, there've been some, some expenditures recently in the past few months of items that were questioned, why aren't they on the capital improvements project? Why weren't they worked in so that they could be budgeted for down the road? They weren't necessarily emergency things that needed to be done, but the money was there and the money was spent for it. I don't think that's quite the way to do things. It's, uh, it's not planning to fail is failing to plan. And I think there needs a little more fiscal responsibility there. There's some projects that, that are being done or have been done that could be trimmed up and, and save us some money that way. And things, we need to be what we call frugal. And frugal means not being cheap, but making sure we're getting value for the dollar that's being spent. So I think that's something on the city council would need to really look at and address very frequently. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey.
Due to the state making changes all over, every city is suffering from either high property taxes or high electricity bills, et cetera, et cetera. The state puts you in a certain position where you have to figure things out. And I can tell you right now, raising property taxes is not the one. I mean, it's been discussed amongst the community of how property taxes did go up and that's been a big concern amongst our community. We want to lower property taxes. We want to keep property taxes down. That is the one thing people do not want to pay is high property taxes. We want to keep it to where people are happy, not to where living inside your means or stuff like that. There is a process and there is city clerk's office. They, they go over all these numbers. They crunch these numbers every day and nine times out of 10, they're spot on under numbers of what we can spend or what we can't spend. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. This next question, we'll start with Mr. Kemp. Public safety takes up more than a third of the city budget. How will you ensure departments have needed resources while holding them accountable?
So, um, so police and fire are definitely cornerstones of every community and their necessary expenses. There's really no way around that because if, I mean, if you cut it because, oh, we don't need them as much, then when you do need them, you won't have them. Keeping those, um, budgets in, in line definitely are a big priority for city council as a whole. And I, and I think, um, that we've done a good job the last, at least as long as I've been paying attention, to be fair, it's not as long as many others. It seems like we've done a good job at keeping those services within budget and giving them everything that they, everything that they need. I think that something worth looking into would be cooperating more with area, with other communities in our area, especially West Burlington. I think that there are definitely savings and to be had by combining services potentially or just working with them in a greater capacity to both of our benefit.
Thank you. Mr. Repke.
Granted, public safety does take most, a lot of the budget and that's the hand we're dealt with. And I think we're, believe we're still short on the police department, on quite a few. Pay is an issue. That's always going to be a pay issue. You're not going to be able to compete with bigger communities, with bigger tax bases in which they can pay their public servants more. So, but what you got to try to make is that it's a good place to work as a police officer or fireman, that yeah, I can get a little bit more, but the benefits of living in Burlington outweigh living in Iowa City, Cedar Rapids, or those bigger areas. Cooperation with other communities to help with spreading the cost out and make sure everybody has high quality services is a good idea. You have to look and see who will work with you on that. But again, it's what we have. Priority spending, priority budgeting. What can you do with the dollars you have, just as you do with your own budgets at home and see how it works? And trying to make that when you have people, why are they want, have the job, so yes, I want to stay here because it's a good community, it's a good place to work in those positions, rather than saying, ah, I can make more money elsewhere. It's not worth the hassle living here. I'll move somewhere else. You want to change that culture so they feel like, yeah, it's important, the city values my work, the city values our participation, I want to stay here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schnack.
Public safety is the number one priority in my life here, when I think it should be in everybody's. Our police, fire, and ambulance service, those are the people that you call when you're, when you're scared or you're hurt or you're in need and you expect that to be there. So we need to make sure that they are fully funded. The fire department's done a really good job of adding people to the, to their employee list. The police department's been having a little trouble finding people, just like any employer has trouble finding good help too. But there was recently a new program that was coming out through the, through the military that anybody in their last six months of the military could possibly go work as a civil servant in a police department or a fire department or, or an ambulance service, part of their transitioning into the private sector, which according to Chief Toops from the fire station, they had one applicant from the East Coast that has filled in an application to come help with the Burlington Fire Department. So I looked at it as a positive and we need to capitalize on those things and make sure if somebody does come here, they want to continue to stay here. Thank you.
Mr. Bailey.
First and foremost, public safety is the number one thing. We want to keep our citizens safe with what we have. Yes, we are short on officers. That's, that is a given. The police department manages their budget very well, so they very well know what they need and how many they need to service their community. They do a very good job with what they have and they make it work. The fire department also maintains their budget pretty good. They did, they swore in new firefighters to help with certain situations, to be out there, to be on time, to cut that response time down. That is very important. The more safe I think our community feel is we work together. Regardless if it's just, we know we're short police officers, we know there are situations that we can't get to. We call it community policing. If our community comes together like it should and like we do and stand together, crime or any other thing doesn't stand a chance in this community. Thank you.
Mr. Kreitzer.
All right. Well, I agree with everybody else that public safety is the most important thing, the service that we offer. We do make sure that they have resources and we do hold them accountable by making sure that they have quality hires. We have programs where they promote leadership and education within. They're responsive to that. I do believe that they maintain proper care and treatment of their equipment, whether it's the fire trucks, you see them washing them and taking care of them all the time and their gear when they suit up, they've always, they always clean it right away. Again, the police department does the same thing. I do think that they maintain a high quality of professionalism that's comparable to bigger cities. So I think that we could put our guys up against anybody in a bigger city and they would perform well. So if we took them out of this environment and plucked them into, let's say Cedar Rapids or Des Moines, I think that they could hold their own. I did participate in both the citizens' police and fire academies and I got to see firsthand the, the high level of leadership and professionalism they have, confident in their abilities and, and how they budget and plan for future hires or replacing a vehicle or, or equipment as they need it. So I think they're doing a fantastic job and I think that even though it's a third of the budget, it's more than worth it.
Thank you. For our fourth question, we'll start with Mr. Repke. Burlington faces shortages of housing supply, rehabilitation needs in older homes, and affordability challenges. What concrete actions would you pursue to address these problems for working families?
That's a difficult one. COVID hurt things. Low interest rates also hurt things because they boosted the price, they lowered the price, they boosted the prices of houses and they really haven't gone down since interest rates have gone up. Though interest rates at their current rate aren't really that high. I say they're more normal than they, than over the life of loans. One of the things is we need to work on the vacant housing problem. One vacant house in a neighborhood starts, it's the broken window syndrome. It starts affecting all the other houses and people. We got to work on that and that would hopefully bring more housing into it. Affordability is going to win things. It costs $200,000, I say on average, to build a new house. That's a lot of money. How do you break that? I don't know. But A, giving things away is not always the option either. So, and also you got to be patient. Things will shift. Prices will come down, interest rates will come down. Demographics is also going to be, play a fact in Burlington too. With the older population, I think at last I looked, a good portion of the population of Burlington is elderly. They're going to not be, those houses are going to be coming on the market and so you'll have more of that here in the future. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schnack?
We've got several opportunities in the city of Burlington to address housing. The nuisance department, for example, with the dilapidated, dilapidated buildings and the demolition of, of houses and things that are not capable being rehabbed are, are being pushed to their limits on the, on the budget money that's available for it. They've had very good success with homes that were taken over that are able to be rehabilitated. We've had some very, very good contractors come in and step up and pay pretty decent money for some of these properties and done wonderful jobs with, with rehabs of these properties. We need to keep going with that. With some of the other opportunities, one of our clinkers that we have here in Burlington is the old Klein Center. And we really need to work hard and, and actually pursue a contractor that would be willing to come in and work with the city for the demolition of that Klein Center and then build that as a subdivision of affordable homes. I believe there's about, somewhere around 20 lots that are capable of building homes. If they could build two and three bedroom homes in that area, that would elevate the entire neighborhood. It would provide more new homes to help the housing shortage and it'd just be a win-win-win altogether. So, we need to take advantage of every one of those opportunities and be proactive on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
Can you repeat that?
Sure. Burlington faces shortages of housing supply, rehabilitation needs in older homes, and affordability challenges. What concrete actions would you pursue to address these problems for working families?
Look for ways to help our people. Help our people achieve these goals. Setting up classes, finance, educating on how we can do this together versus them spending X amount of dollars to do this. Finding grants that can help facilitate that rehab homes, help the demo buildings, selling these plots at a recent rate, in a very decent rate, and affordable housing. By doing that, we can, we can, 50% of that population can be knocked down by doing that. But us as leaders or elected leaders, we need to dig and find ways to help our community and the people that want to do this. If we can pull that off and we can do that, we will be sitting very good. The housing market will get better and affordable housing will come.
Mr. Kreitzer?
Mr. Schnack is spot on. We need to rehab homes and take care of those vacant homes. They do go up for auction and we have had some success where people bid on them and rehab them and then put them back on the market or people sometimes move into them. Downtown, we've rehabbed the upper stories of buildings above businesses and turned those into apartments and they look fantastic and people are renting those. The quality of rentals, I believe in Burlington have improved. We have more frequent inspections now, but I also think that we have a great set of landlords here in town that actually care about their properties and they care about their renters and they're taking care of those folks. So, good landlords would be on my checklist, not that I can force that, but I definitely support that. We mentioned the Klein Center, but the Apollo School was also on that list of things that need to be fixed up and we've had people look into it. I think someone finally bought it and was trying to do something with it. The Klein Center, same thing. It could be 22 lots, it could be housing development right there in a park, so that would improve our housing stock. I would also encourage the possibility of using TIF or grants. For those of you that don't know how TIF funding works, it's set at whatever the tax base is now, but that will go up in that 10 years, you know, to what it should be after they develop the property. So, it's, it's a good deal in the long run and you might lose money temporarily, but in the long run, we're good. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Kemp? Do you want me to read the question again?
Yes, please.
All right. Burlington faces shortages of housing supply, rehabilitation needs in older homes, and affordability challenges. What concrete actions would you pursue to address these problems for working families?
There's a lot there. So, for housing shortages and I think that kind of goes hand in hand with rehabilitation of older homes is just creating more livable homes in Burlington. As Terry mentioned, the city has done a good job of making those homes that are vacant or in poor shape available for contractors to purchase and, and rehabilitate. Another thing that the city has done recently is completely redone the house on the corner division in Marietta Street, which had sat vacant for years and years and is now soon to be finished as a home valued at over $200,000, which is fantastic, at very little cost to our local taxpayers because of a grant that we were able to obtain for it. Something else that our area does well is SEIR PC has a program for down payment assistance, which I would love to see expanded, as well as increasing the financial stability of our residents will help as well.
All right. Our fifth question, we'll go to Mr. Schnack here. The city must make tough choices on major infrastructure projects while residents want better street maintenance and stable taxes and fees. What are your top three spending priorities in the city budget and why?
They're all important. Everybody wants everything and they want it right now. I believe the city, as far as infrastructure and roads and streets right now, has put a real big emphasis on the main corridors. Madison Street, the upcoming $10 million project for Summer Street, you know, Harrison was done here not too long ago, Sunny Side, they want to get the main thoroughfare, thoroughfares taken care of first because that's where the most traffic is. Once those big projects are completed, a million dollars will go a long ways in a neighborhood for doing those, you know, those side streets and stuff. So, I think the city has really taken the correct approach on how they prioritize which road gets done first and which one gets done second. I think they also do a very good job of applying for grant money so that it becomes affordable that, again, so we can do the most bang for the buck. And that's what we're all about, getting the most out of the money that's being spent. So, I think we're doing a pretty good job. We need to stay on track. We need to watch those dollars and just keep going on. Thank you.
Mr. Bailey? Can you repeat that question?
Sure, sure.
City must make tough choices on major infrastructure projects while residents want better street maintenance, stable taxes and fees. What are your top three spending priorities in the city budget and why?
Well, our streets, which they're currently being improved and the city has focused on the major corridors with grants. You know, that's less spending coming from our taxpayers or little to no spending. One of the major things is that I would like to make sure we're safe. Public safety is our first, to make sure that we can spend and be well on the budget to provide the citizens with protection. And also to make sure that we don't spend X amount of dollars on projects that we don't need. We need to do what our citizens need us to do and that's the lead and that's to do it the correct way with the way how they want it. It's their city and we work for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kreitzer?
Well, there's always tough choices when it comes to infrastructure, but we do have a list of priorities when it looks, we look at roads, you do the major throwaways first and then you do the arterials and then eventually you get to the side roads. They're all in a five-year, 10-year, 20-year plan though, so people that feel like we're never getting to their road, it's on the list. You just have to take care of the major ones first where everybody drives. I would say that one of the ways we do save money is kind of the two birds, one stone kind of thing. When we were tearing up the downtown with the Taggart grant, we went and worked on the sewers while the road was up. We did the sidewalks all at once, you know, did it, two projects at once. When we work on Cascade Bridge, they're going to repair the roadways when we do the bridge and then they're also going to do some sewer work there on the interceptor. I would say that the flood mitigation project we had downtown with that flood wall saved us a lot of money in the long run because we didn't have to repair the downtown every time we had a major flood event. And so that, what's the word I'm looking for? It prevented us having to do the work twice or repeatedly. It mitigated it. So, whenever we can do two projects at once, Nick McGregor's great about that at Public Works. Whenever he sees an opportunity to do two things at once and save the time and resources, that saves us money and, you know, I think we're doing a good job. I agree with what Terry said about that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Kemp? Do you want me to read it again?
Yes, please.
All right. The city must make tough choices on major infrastructure projects while residents want better street maintenance and stable taxes and fees. What are your top three spending priorities in the city budget and why?
So, something that was mentioned earlier was that a third of the city budget goes to emergency. So, I feel like this question is more so tackling like what are the things that we are not necessarily devoting, devoting a lot of time and attention to now that need focus? So, to me, that would be supporting the library, an adequate amount, which hasn't been in our budget, it hasn't been part of our CID, which it needs to be, the parks and pool, and building a better community through uplifting our citizens in general. We can do that by, basically, it isn't necessarily infrastructure, but as Terry and Robert have mentioned, we do a good job at, through our Public Works Department, planning for things that will be needing done and doing more, lumping more than one project together to get it done more effectively and future-proofing it as much as possible. And, yeah, we can do as much as we can.
Okay, Mr. Repke?
Again, the three, you know, one, two, three, if you want to go that with priority is one, public safety, two, infrastructure, you know, streets and that, and three, amenities. One thing with the infrastructure, I, I see, I drive around town a lot, when they do something on a project, they're not really good at going back to city as of upkeeping it. I kind of notice it, they get a little slow on ceiling cracks and asphalt streets that are, and, you know, and when you let those go, they get worse and the street gets worse. Secondly, I've seen when they do projects, they don't do it all the way. They leave some things missing and it, it's not a complete project, yet we celebrate it being done, but it's really not done. Also, you got to look at too, with the infrastructure projects, what you're doing. If you're just overlaying brick on asphalt again, how long is that going to last? Sometimes you got to say, yeah, we got to put the money in more than we're doing now to keep so we don't have to do it again another 15 years. We seem to be chasing our tail in that. We got to make some better decisions on how we redo these streets and roads rather than the saying, eh, that's okay, that looks good, we're happy with it, and it's, eh, maybe not done the way it should be done. Those are some of the questions we need to ask and we need to concentrate on the neighborhoods. That's where people are going to live. Good neighborhoods equal more things coming to the city. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Bailey, this next question, we'll start with you. Many challenges from housing to workforce development cross city boundaries. What is the most pressing issue that requires stronger regional partnerships and how would you strengthen collaboration with West Burlington and Des Moines County to solve it?
Partnering on some projects that you have the same focus on. Sewer projects, police projects. Eventually, the state's going to come down and they're going to make you partner on a lot of projects. Therefore, I think the city of West Burlington and Burlington and Des Moines County can all come together and work together as one on projects that can benefit the community right away. Not long term, but right away and build into that long term with partnering on more projects. The more we partner, the better things wind up in the end.
Thank you. Mr. Kreitzer?
Well, I'll let Chad start the timer there. I do know that we have been collaborating with our neighboring communities for quite a while, especially when it comes to fire service. We even go into Illinois, we respond to any fire call within the county, which is fantastic. I'm sure our police force would do the same if we were needed. I do know that the city manager and the mayor have collabed with West Burlington and their city manager and mayor and that like recently, we talked about sharing equipment for painting lines on the, on the roadways. I think there's opportunities at Public Works for us to, to share some duties and some equipment, maybe pool our resources. You know, there's things that we have to think about in the future. If our, our swimming pool, for example, that pool liner doesn't come through with the company that we're in litigation with, if they can't fulfill their obligations and we have to consider other options, I would hope that maybe we can work something out with West Burlington where we could share a pool or services. You know, we do a great job with our parks. I don't know why we couldn't help out with theirs and exchange some services. So, I think there's opportunity for us as a county to, to, to grow and then involve the, our, you know, we're the hub. We have all these communities around us that have come to Burlington to shop and play and do all this stuff and I think that we could help each other and I, I think that would be a good thing for Des Moines County.
Thank you. Mr. Kemp? Can you read the question?
Yes, please.
Many challenges from housing to workforce development cross city boundaries. What is the most pressing issue that requires stronger regional partnerships and how would you strengthen collaboration with West Burlington and Des Moines County to solve it?
So, in, in thinking about how we can strengthen our communities by greater cooperation between Burlington and other communities in Des Moines County, I think that the biggest thing for Burlington would be, one of our biggest issues that comes up over and over again is staffing issues within some of our emergency departments. And we also, as Robert outlined, we do a lot of cooperation with other departments that, through city, fire, and other emergency services. And I think that in order to do more of that, the biggest thing that we can do is simply communicate more. The, we had a joint work session with West Burlington a month or two ago and the biggest takeaway was that they, both sides said, we need to communicate more and then they decided, okay, so in order to do that, let's meet once a quarter and hammer out the details of this and that's not nearly enough to make any discernible change, in my opinion. I think that we should chase that, chase that ball harder and really work towards cooperating together as communities in Des Moines County.
Mr. Repke?
Number one thing is do not assume. I, I think when it comes between the conversation between different entities in Des Moines County, a lot of assumptions are made by all groups and that doesn't help. So, you got to push that aside. Second, when you start talking to them, keep it quiet. Not that you're trying to hide anything from the taxpayers or people to know, but you know, you see some things, you know, it hits the paper and, well, I didn't know about that, I didn't know about that, I didn't know about that. And it gets everybody's hackles up because all of a sudden it's out, not that you don't want it in the public, but it becomes assumption-driven and that's not good. It becomes a, I don't want it, I don't want it, it, it's not a way. Have the meetings, talk about it, don't assume what each other's side wants and see what is beneficial to both. Usually, it becomes, well, they're going to get more than us, they're going to get more than us, and you got to avoid that. That's what becomes the problem with all that. So, first of all, don't assume. Talk to them nicely, meet together, say, what are your needs, what are our needs, what can we do together, rather than assuming, oh, you have that, we can do it, or, you know, we can partner with it. They might not want to, you got to talk. And it's the assumptions that come, it's, keep it quiet in a sense, don't put it in the press, oh, we're talking about this, all of a sudden everybody's hackles get up when nothing's been confirmed, nothing's been decided, say, okay, thank you.
Mr. Schnack?
I think we're already making some progress, working with the county and our neighboring city of West Burlington. city of West Burlington. I think, from the county, if you look at the county sheriff's department, the West Burlington Police Department, the Burlington Fire Department, I think each one will not hesitate for mutual aid in an emergency situation to back each other up. Same thing goes with the fire departments. I think West Burlington would back Burlington anytime there was anything major. I think when the Tama Building caught on fire, I think West Burlington was here pretty quick as well, and I know Burlington would jump if West Burlington said help. So, I think we're making some, you know, really good strides that way, but I keep remembering the comment, I think it was year before last, it had a touch-a-truck program where the kids could come out and see the fire trucks and the big trucks that the city have and stuff, and Mr. Byrd, the city manager, had made mention that, here we come with Burlington's brand-new sewer jet truck, and there's West Burlington with a brand-new sewer jet truck. And, you know, those trucks are, what, $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 each, and they're not something that's used on a daily basis. So, looking at things like that, that could be shared, pieces of equipment to save both communities some money. I remember when I did have my automotive business in West Burlington, seeing the Burlington City Street Sweeper go down the street in West Burlington.
All right, our next question, we'll go to Mr. Kreitzer first. "Beyond formal meetings, how would you proactively engage residents from all neighborhoods to ensure that their voices are heard before major decisions are made?"
Well, I am active on Facebook and social media, so I field a lot of questions I did during my service, I did before, I did after. For a while, I wrote for the newspaper and did a weekly editorial, or an opinion, rather, and kind of would weigh in on something going on in the community. But I ask people everywhere I go, and I have a job where I'm, it's public-facing, so whenever I'm in a store, I bump into people and I ask them, you know, hey, what do you think about this, what's your concerns, what's going on here? And you do get a mixed bag of opinions and thoughts and feelings about things, or misconceptions. So, sometimes you just have to put the fires out and just let people know that's not exactly how it works, or you were misinformed, and try to set them on the right path. Sometimes people don't want to hear an honest opinion or hear the facts, because they've had their mind made up. Those are the difficult ones to deal with, but I still listen to them. Don't always agree with everything that everybody tells me, but at least they know I'm listening, and at least they know I'll respond. So, when I get that information, I usually communicate it to council even now, or the city manager, or if you see something out and about, you bring it to their attention. So, other than formal meetings, it's just being a man of the people and going out and doing some talking.
All right. Mr. Kemp, should I me to read the question?
If you'd like to.
Sure. "Beyond formal meetings, how would you proactively engage residents from all neighborhoods to ensure that their voices are heard before major decisions are made?"
Well, something that I haven't mentioned tonight is what I do for a living. So, I own a hair salon and I cut hair for a living. So, eight to 10 times a day, five days a week, I engage people in conversation for half an hour or more at a time. And so, in that amount of time, I hear all about all of the good that's going on in their life, all of the bad and all of the difficulties, and a lot of that has to, can be sent back to the city itself. And so, as a hair cutter, my primary work that I do is active listening and then problem-solving. What is, what's happening? How can we make it better? What's the path forward? And so, as far as accessibility, there's, I have people from all walks of life and all neighborhoods who come in, but aside from that, I'm just, I feel like a fairly approachable person, and I try to be out in the community as much as possible, and just, I want to do more for more people, and so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Repke.
One of the things is, you know, people want their voices heard. One of the things I noticed, and speaking of formal meetings, I think the work sessions need to change a little bit. I think that people should be able to ask questions on the relevant topic up. I think they're not, and so it causes misunderstanding, pushes things off to the council meeting, it makes people frustrated. Secondly, I don't like Facebook. I think it's too much sniping. For me, myself, if elected, I would try, get set up a monthly meeting, all councilmen could join me with it, to meet with the citizens on a Saturday morning at a place, bring their concerns, so we can hear them more in an open, give them some more information that they might not have opportunity to have, so that there is that better communication with one another. Those are the important things. Keep your ear open, talk to the people, listen to them, but no Facebook. Too many people get sniping here, sniping there. I want to talk to somebody face-to-face. If they can't talk to me face-to-face, why not? I'm easy to get along with, we should be able to do that. And that's the most important thing. A lot of people don't want to do that. It's become sniping here, sniping there. And if you talk to somebody, you might not agree, ever agree, but at least you're talking, you're communicating. That's one of the big things, communicate. You might not agree, as it says, not everybody's going to be happy. Especially, mama not happy, nobody's happy.
Mr. Snack.
The biggest thing to understand is, running for council, if I were elected, I'm not running to represent my ideals. I'm here, I'm working for the community, and I'm your voice, and I have to be open and approachable, that people want to come to me, express their concerns, so that I can find answers to their questions, and maybe find resolve in what they want. Sometimes I feel like I'm already on the council, because I already have a lot of people that say, hey, you go to all the council meetings, you go to all the work sessions, you know all this stuff, what's going on with this property, or how do I find out about this or that? Sometimes I don't have the answer for them, but I guarantee that I'm going to go get the answer for them, and I meet with Mr. Byrd or Eric in the nuisance department, or wherever I need to go to find out an update, so I can get back to them. I would like to continue that, if I were elected to city council, to be very approachable. Explain to me your concerns, let me explain what's going on, and let's see if we can find a resolve, or maybe even a better solution to what we're dealing with right now. So, I'm working, I'm here to work for you people. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey.
I look at it in three ways. Relatability, accountability, and just being able to go sit and talk to the citizens. You have to hear them. If they don't understand something, you have to put it in terms of where they understand. Sometimes they're not always going to understand, but the most important thing is that you lay out all the facts. Be honest. Don't lie, because it catches up to you after a while. You have to be honest with the people. If you can relate to what they're talking about and how they're feeling, that conversation's going to go very smooth. And I can tell you right now, I work with the public every day, and I do the best job I can, it's communicating with the public and making sure they know exactly what's going on, being transparent, and just being open and honest.
All right, thank you. We'll take the next question here to Mr. Kemp. "The city has used significant incentives such as TIF rebates to attract large employers. How would you balance the strategy of recruiting major companies with supporting small locally-owned businesses? And what is one specific action you would take to help existing small businesses succeed?"
So, how would I balance trying to bring in new and bigger businesses with helping out our current small businesses? So, I'm a big believer that a rising tide raises all ships, so I don't, yes, we should definitely continue to try to bring in new businesses, but as I mentioned before, we should also go about creating greater accessibility for people in our community to launch new small businesses and also expand their businesses. So, I think ways that we can do that, as you mentioned, is with TIF incentive, incentives that can help mitigate the tax liability for things. Other options would be some sort of grants for small business owners in the Burlington area that just need a little bit of extra funding to get to that next stage and support our community better.
Okay, Mr. Repke.
One of the things, it's always been said, time is money, and that's especially with bigger corporations, in that, I would look at, how long does it take to get the permits for them to do something? I think that needs to probably be sped up. Watch about what the, not building codes, it's the wrong term, but what's required for the building. So many trees here, so many trees there. Specifically, what trees are you planting? You don't need all that. That's surface, that's surface, that's not important compared to getting a safe building that's up to code for fire, electric and that, and so it can go up quickly, so they can get back for large companies making. Do the same, too, for small businesses that want to expand. You know, you don't want to draw, drown them in paperwork and regulations, you want to open it up, so, yeah, we want you to do that. Is the building safe? Is electrical safe? Is that safe? Does it look okay? Yeah. Oh, it's not, you don't have 10 different types of trees, that's okay. So, it's nice, presentable. Those are the things that are needed to help the businesses come. As for the TIF money and all that, yeah, it's helpful, but it's, also in some sense, comes Peter paying, you know, Peter paying Paul or stealing from Paul, it becomes, you're taking one pocket from another, that's not always good. You have to have it balanced out, so that everybody feels that they're getting the worth of what they're building and bringing to Burlington. Thank you.
Mr. Snack.
I think a good example to use to show of bigger business was Western Smokehouse Project, and how the city stepped forward to provide TIF program for that, for that expansion. You know, we've got Amazon that went out there towards the Recplex area as well, good-paying jobs, hiring a lot of people. Western Smokehouse hired more than what they projected, and they're paying more than what they projected to start with. Being in good communications with them, asking them, what do you need, and here's what we can do, the communication part of it is very, very important. I think that's the thing that's going to bring larger businesses to our area. As far as the small businesses, you know, I lived in that world for over 27 years, you know, and it's rough, believe me, it can be. But Burlington is such a unique place. Our downtown has so many wonderful small businesses, there are so many independent businesses throughout the entire city of Burlington, that we must be doing something right, and we need to keep encouraging that. I think the Chamber of Commerce is a wonderful avenue for information. We're doing a good job, we just need to stay on that track and go, hooray, let's keep going.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
Can you repeat that question?
Sure can. "The city has used significant incentives such as TIF rebates to attract large employers. How would you balance the strategy of recruiting major companies with supporting small locally-owned businesses, and what is one specific action you would take to help existing small businesses succeed?"
Offer them the same thing. Got to be equal across the board. If you're going to offer a big business incentives to come in and put a business in and to thrive in our community, as I said earlier, create more jobs, more housing opportunities. But you have to do the same for the small businesses as well, because they would have the same capabilities as big business, or not better, to do the same and actually hire local, local people that's here in town, that's not looking for a whole lot of work, a lot of hours, but giving them the hours they need and want.
Thank you. Mr. Kreitzer.
All right, well, I'm a supporter of TIF incentives, I think that it's a good thing. It eventually does raise that tax base, like I said, but when companies like Western Smokehouse meets come in and then they want to expand, they've also, are expanding to Mexico, Missouri, and Galesburg, Illinois, and I really feel like we were the catalyst for that, they're growing here, so now they have money to invest in themselves, so that helps. The downtown area has a SMID, it's a self-supporting municipal ID district or tax ID district, where you voluntarily pay more taxes as a business owner downtown, and in turn, the partnership or downtown partners promotes you and helps your business. The Greater Burlington Partnership is one of those things that we, the community does that the city has nothing to do with, but that partnership, that you guys get the hotel motel tax, to help Burlington grow. So, you know, we have a bunch of tools in our toolbox, and I think that we need to use them when appropriate. I'm not going to smack a nail with a wrench, but I will use the right kind of hammer when I have to. So, I think that just what we're doing is, we're kind of locked in on setting goals and making things happen, and offering financial incentives to do it, and I think that we're moving in the right direction, that we're a community on the rise.
All right, thank you. I will take this next question to Mr. Repke. "Do you believe Burlington's current planning and zoning framework is adequate to meet today's housing and commercial challenges? If not, what specific changes would you support to encourage growth while protecting the community's historic character?"
That's loaded, that's a lot of things. You got to look at, I think, each neighborhood individually. You can't just do a blanket statement and say, oh, this is going to fit everywhere. For, you know, for example, if you want to keep the historical nature, you're not putting in probably townhomes in the historic district, you know, things like that. So, you got to look at each neighborhood, what capacity it has, what it needs, and what it can support. And if you're talking about housing, what is logical for that area? If you want to put in more supportive housing, or as you call, low-income housing, is there in that area the infrastructure needed for those people, i.e., grocery store, transportation? Those things are needed so they can improve and, you know, not become the low-income, if you will, to improve themselves in life. So, that's those things you got to look at. You have to look maybe at each neighborhood, each situation in a different way. Something, just a blanket statement doesn't always work. But again, when you do that, you got to be working in concert with those neighborhoods and with people. You just can't force something upon them. It needs to be talked about, visited about, and in a short timeframe. You can talk the things to death and never do anything, and that's not beneficial. Thank you.
Mr. Snack.
Well, Brian, you and I both serve on the City Planning Commission, and we understand that zoning isn't always perfect, and sometimes the plans need to have a little tweak or a little change. But we, one of the things we look at is, what fits that, what fits that neighborhood? Is it a need, and is it some big shiny glass thing that's in a dilapidated area of town, or, you know, you don't build a million-dollar home where the houses around it are selling for $50,000 and $60,000, you know, type of thing. You've got to preserve the neighborhoods kind of like they are, but you make every effort to help elevate that neighborhood a little bit, too, you don't want to drag it down. So, as Mr. Repke said, every project, every one is a one-on-one project. You can't sugarcoat it or throw a blanket over and say, this is good for all of them. Each one's an individual. So, I think we do have a pretty good setup right now for the zoning of industrial settings and for residential as well. I think it's pretty good, but thank God, we got a planning and zoning commission that reviews those things when those little, oops, what about this one, type of things come up. So, we just need to keep aware. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey, would you like me to reread the question?
Sure.
Okay. "Do you believe Burlington's current planning and zoning framework is adequate to meet today's housing and commercial challenges? If not, what specific changes would you support to encourage growth while protecting the community's historic character?"
Well, I do believe that they have a pretty good system, the way it's set up and the way how they map things out. But to me, I feel that- But to me, I feel that all neighborhoods are the same. I don't look at any neighborhood as being different. I go into a neighborhood, I look at a house, let's say I'm that person building that hundred thousand dollar house. I'm not gonna live in that hundred thousand dollar house. I'm gonna go live in the fifty thousand dollar house. Because that hundred thousand dollar house is gonna be more expensive, and everything is gonna be more expensive in that house than that 50,000. But either way, by the end of the day, and at the end of the day, everything is gonna be the same. Everything should be the same. No neighborhood should be different than any other neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kreitzer?
Uh, I, I think the framework is appropriate currently. We do have some historic neighborhoods, like the North Hill neighborhood, like at the top of Snake Alley, that you would want to preserve, uh, the history of that area. Um, but really, overall, I, I think we're doing things how they should be done. I do know that we've encountered some commercial properties that were still zoned residential, and we catch those things, and we, we fix them and switch them over to commercial. So I think at this point, um, really, it's just trying to make everything right, and we do that when we review, um, code or whatever. You go back through and go, hey, that one needs adjusted, that one's not worded right, that's not exactly what we were planning on there. So, I think just getting it right, we go by a case-by-case basis with zoning, um, which is appropriate. I think we're doing what we're supposed to on that one, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kim? Would you like me to read it again?
Sure.
All right, it's a long one. Do you believe Burlington's current planning and zoning framework is adequate to meet today's housing and commercial challenges? If not, what specific changes would you support to encourage growth while protecting the community's historic character?
I will be the first to say that I am not overly familiar with, um, Burlington's zoning practices, um, but up until this point, that hasn't been my job, to be fair. Um, but that is why we have a, a fantastic staff behind us to, uh, actually work those things out, and it's our job, again, to ensure that, uh, transparency with those practices, and ensure that our residents are being heard when, uh, they have issues, and, um, that the zoning of properties are, is done in a responsible and equitable way. Um, I trust the system enough that, uh, when changes need to be made, they will be made, um, in order to make the systems run smoother.
Thank you. All right, we'll come down to our last question for the evening. Mr. Snack is gonna go to you. Looking ahead four years, what is the single most important outcome you would want to accomplish as a city council member, and how will you measure that success?
In four years, I want to be able to look back and say, I feel that I did a good job. Um, there's so many projects that are, that are, that are on the, the plate right now. Cascade Bridge, for example, the Apollo School, uh, Dankworth Park Pool, um, one of the things I could concern about is like the depot. Um, infrastructure, there, there's so many things on the, on the table there. You, you can't put one above the other, but I want to see these projects move forward in a fiscally responsible way, and be completed to serve our community. Um, I, I guess I, I would look at it just like I did when I had my business. I retired at the end of 2022. And did I do, did I do a good job, or was I successful? Well, nobody offered me a ride to the edge of the city limits, and a lot of people said, you know, we're, we're really gonna miss you. And I still have people today that contact me on that, so, uh, that's what I'm gonna use as my gauge of whether I did a good job. Thank you.
Mr. Bailey?
A legacy I would love to leave in four years is to let the people know that I, I worked very hard for them over four years. To see a lot of projects get completed, to being able to reach out to people, sit, laugh, talk with them, walk with them, just being that person that they can come talk to when they needed somebody to talk to. Just being a shoulder or a ear for them to talk. Being a person, being normal. Four years is a long time from now, but that legacy I would like to leave our community is being that person you can come to when you need anything, or if you want anything.
Thank you. Mr. Kreitzer?
Well, uh, I served four years once before, and I was proud of the job that I did when I left, um, and I'm ready to come back and finish completing some of the goals that we've started. Um, I would like to see more engagement from the community and community involvement, so I kind of put myself out there and try to get as many people on board as I can. Um, I'd like to continue with the improvement of our housing stock and our infrastructure. Uh, I'd like to continue to maintain our services and our amenities, um, and I, I don't really want to give anything up, so, um, I want to continue to make progress, and, and four years from now, I want to look back and say that I was part of that. Um, you know, Burlington is special. It's, uh, it's a great community. We have a lot to offer, um, and I, I think that we're doing great things, and I think that we just need somebody that really, uh, shows the spirit of the community and, and the fact that we need more jobs, more housing, more stuff to do, and that we are making it happen, so, uh, I would like to be the, the catalyst for that and keep things bubbling right along, so, um, I would appreciate you guys if you would support me and, and bring me back to council for another four-year run, and I, you know, you already know I'll do a good job. I did it once before, and I'll do it again.
Mr. Kim? Could you read the question again?
Sure, be happy to.
Looking ahead four years, what is the single most important outcome you would want to accomplish as a city council member, and how will you measure that success?
I'm a firm believer that the health of a society should be measured by the quality of life of, and well-being of its poorest individuals. To that end, I feel like the, uh, what I would like to accomplish is providing more, uh, uh, expanding services of the library and the, and reopening the pool, um, creating a, um, um, s- a supportive housing community would do a, a lot for our, uh, city as a whole, and, um, basically, as we all know, economically, this has not been an easy time for any of us, and I think that the biggest way that we can, um, improve that for our community is by, uh, raising not, not just the median wage, uh, income of our community, but the average wage, um, and, uh, relative to the cost of living. Um, yeah, that's how I would measure success.
Thank you. Mr. Repke?
One would be, I would like to see that, and everybody understand, I was faithful to the taxpayers, faithful to the citizens who would elect me to office, that I did the job as elected to do as a councilman, to watch the budget and to move the city forward. And also, what I would like to see then too, is whatever happens those few, four years, that it just doesn't come to an end. Sometimes you see things come, and all of a sudden, what happened to that project? What happened to that idea? It just comes to an end and never carries through. I'd like to see so going forward, that things continue to improve in the city, they look better. You know, and it's the old saying, you know, the light at the end of the tunnel. Well, the tunnel, when it comes to the city, never ends, because you're always looking for, looking for improvement. You just hope it's not the train coming, you know, as they say, but that's what you're always working for. The betterment of the community, and that you're making those steps, so things get better. Is there anything gonna change dramatically in four years? No. There's always gonna be issues, there's always gonna be problems, there's always gonna be new challenges. You just work through them and go forward, so you go through them, you meet them, you become a better city each and every time you face these issues. Because who knows? You know, we had COVID. That threw a wrench into all kinds of lives. What's the new thing coming? You just have to work through it, and as you work through it, you become a city that becomes stronger, and that's what I would hope after the four years. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, we will have closing statements now. Uh, we'll start with Mr. Bailey, and in your closing remarks, please share with us what sets you apart from other candidates. Each candidate will have 60 seconds.
As I said earlier, relatability. I can relate to our general public. I can wait, I can relate to almost anyone. I don't know you from Paul, but I can walk up to you and I can have a 10-minute conversation with you, just like I knew you back in the day. I have that ability, and I'm, I am probably the, the best candidate as being a strong leader. I have that ability to lead. And I would love to lead this community the next four years.
Thank you. Mr. Kreitzer?
What sets me apart? I'm a unicorn. Um, uh, you know, I don't know a stranger. I, uh, I, I can go up and talk to anybody about anything. Um, I don't have to be right or wrong in a situation. I can listen to you, um, try to make you laugh usually, um, it's kind of my nature. But, um, as far as what sets me apart from anybody else, everybody up here would do a good job, I think. I do have a strong work ethic. Um, I put 20 years into one job, retired, and then I'm five years into the next one. Uh, I did six years in the National Guard, I did four years on council. I volunteer for all kinds of stuff that I don't have time for, and I make it happen. So, um, I, I show up, and I think that's the most important thing you can do in a position like this, is put yourself out there and, and let people know you're available, and, and like he said, you, you gotta talk to them, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kreitzer. Mr. Kim?
Well, it sets me apart. Um, so in addition to having a business, cutting hair and problem solving and listening for the last 10 to fif- close to 15 years now, um, I also have, um, five years of experience working at the state level on the Iowa Board of Cosmetology and Barbering. Um, so that has afforded me a lot of experience, um, looking at the way that government functions from a bird's eye view, and how it impacts, uh, in that case, our licensees, in this case, our residents. Um, I'm, uh, in addition to being a problem solver, I'm also a bit of a numbers person. I think that all numbers tell a story, and so I feel like I can bring that sort of practicality to, um, budgeting and, um, basically trying to make every dollar, uh, make more happier stories for our community.
Thank you. Mr. Repke?
I would, again, hold the taxpayers in highest regard. They're paying the bills for the city. They're the bill payer, so I'd hold them in high regard. I'd also be very open to talking to anybody. Again, not on Facebook. I like to do it in person. Um, I'd listen to them. Would we always agree? No. Nobody's gonna agree on everything. But I would set me apart by, I'm going to be concerned about your, what you're paying, how the city's using the money, which direction we're going, and you can come and talk to me. I'm always gonna be open to that. Um, to listen, to talk, to converse, see both points of the side, and then take that responsibility of what the citizens have voted me for very, very seriously. Again, I look forward as on the city council, is the city is not stagnant, but always going forward, with its programs, with its plans, becoming a better and stronger city. I've lived here since 94. Things we can do, we, things have kind of gone down, we can go up.
All right, Mr. Snack?
One of the things you need to understand is, I'm not running for city council to be able to put that, be able to put that on a resume, because I'm not looking for another job. You know, I'm retired. I've got time to put into this job, and I think I, remember a saying, actions speak louder than words. I've been coming to the city council meetings, the work sessions, those all-day-long budget meetings for five years. I've missed four meetings in five years. Chad Bird chuckles and says, hey, he's got better attendance than the people that are on the city council right now. I do it because of passion. Burlington's my home, and I was always told, you take care of home first, before you worry about anything else. And that's what I plan on doing. I think the one advantage that I have, having been to all the meetings, is I won't have a learning curve. I'm already up to speed and ready to go to work. Thank you.
All right. Well, I want to sincerely thank each of you for your interest in serving the Burlington community. Public service can often be a thankless job, but we need dedicated individuals to serve. And I want to thank the Greater Burlington Partnership, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Government Relations Committee for hosting this event, and thank those in the audience here, and those who've been watching and are listening online for your interest in the city council primary election. Please vote for the candidates of your choice in the City of Burlington primary on Tuesday, October 7th. Thank you.